All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the uh-
Well, if you might not be there when you come back.
If Director- if Director Oden will let me, I'm gonna go ahead and call the uh study session for April 12th to order. Just running the show. Other than-
I'll do that in the study.
You're gonna say Scott, you're on.
Who bails you out?
Yeah. Okay, organics recycling.
Oh, real hard for us to do that.
That's still on medication. Acetaminophen. Medic clerk, the roll call.
Director James Ferman is absent at this meeting at this time. Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer here, Secretary Robert Oden, Vice President Arthur Harry, and President Michael Schaefer.
Uh, here.
Could you show that as an excuse then?
Yes.
Uh, public comments, this is time to set aside for people in the audience to make comments within the jurisdiction of the District Board of Directors, not listed on the agenda. Seeing no one from the public other than our representative C.R.R., then I'll close that portion immediately. And we'll move to the organics recycling penises.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the board members. For March, the total petage was seven hundred fifty-three point fifty-three. That's about a twenty percent increase from February.
This includes the organics?
Yeah, this is the organic.
I'm sorry, this isn't the organic.
This is the organic.
It includes some other stuff.
If anything, I'm sure there's some other stuff, we'll probably just see it.
Grand upwards.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I think the numbers are reflective of the season. People are cutting the grass right now.
Yeah, I was wondering, maybe take a look at combining the recyclables and the organics, the other compared to last year.
I do, I do that for the diversion reports that we are now tracking quarterly for the West Side.
Oh, okay.
We are at sixty-seven.
And one other thing on the organics is that we are not reporting organics close to May so as it's like eight. And when they replaced, that was every year, it's pretty minimal.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's, that's, well, call.
See, I think that's, I would expect, I think that's a good way to ask how this was the question. So that just jumped up just to sixty percent?
Yes, the-
The total diversion.
The total diversion is now at sixty percent. I, I believe it's gonna go up even more come fall because we're having a um, a lot of events that will have to be taken into account.
Okay, uh, could Officer report?
Um, thank you, Mr. President, but I'll just report for Ed. I believe he only had seven investigations and if you looked in the uh reports, he'll list the locations as well as the site or gathering reports and any areas that were.
I noticed that he's all through the city, not just at one location. It's pretty good. Yeah, I think we saw kind of a pedaling, you know, pedaling goes on the West Side for a long time. That was starting uh- The whole city of Costa Mesa, you keep logging it.
Yeah, he's trying to keep me from listening to the again.
I, I, you know what's, what's kind of interesting? I've seen it change since we went away from the large item, scheduled large item twice a year. Have you guys noticed that it's different? I mean, the code enforcement is different, it's more spread out, we're seeing different things, um, people, I know, I had three trucks in my neighborhood every Wednesday night. Same three trucks. And they're, I don't see those guys anymore. I don't know when it's gonna happen.
You just see the white truck with the metal, you know, looking for metal.
Yeah, we have a, we have a little white Toyota van that comes to our neighborhood, little Toyota, old south. And I have people all over my neighborhood that send their newspapers out to this guy.
I know.
And that's the only thing he takes of them. And when I see the neighbors, I say, hey, you really shouldn't be doing that. And he said, oh, the poor guy, yeah.
Yeah, I've got one in my neighborhood that's the same thing.
And I still see the little old lady down here on Meyer, Meyer and Hamilton. And Ed, Ed knows what I'm talking about. And I, I think that's how she makes a living.
Well, do you think that the reason why this uh-
The large pickup that used to be every six months has changed because you can always put eleven items out?
I don't know, what do you think?
Well, that's an increase.
There's, there's more than previous fifteen, eleven items.
Before you could put a lot more items than now.
No, this always ends in-
No, it's been ten years.
It's three times.
Three times per year, ten items each call.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Three times a year.
So you can either combine it at thirty items or, you know, or just each call.
I think there's still a hotline, I mean, you still see stuff, I know I put stuff out that disappears before.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so there must be like a hotline or a buzz line, maybe it's on, maybe I'm on Facebook and I don't-
And right now, they're going through the neighborhoods with this garage sale, so people are really looking around.
Okay, any other questions? Then we'll go to the behavioral study final report.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the board members. Sally is currently in pre-yes moment, but she has provided an in-depth report on the results from the organic behavioral studies. Should the board have any specific questions we can try our best to respond or refer back to the matter at the next study, study session with Sally?
You know, I, the one thing I noticed is I didn't see anything materially different than the last time she was here. I mean, a lot of the same things are in this report.
Um, her recommendations, I think she just added that, but the findings are still consistent. Scott has requested June and I to provide some performance measurements to address the recommendations and this will be something that we'll present at the next study session. Or Gina will.
Okay, we, you may not be able to-
Yes.
But it was, was, I mean, I didn't see any Bob and then-
Well, the, I think the ones that take away, um, the board and the staff should pay attention to is, if the neighbors know that neighbors are doing the inside thing, um, they, that improves, you know, that improves the attitude of people around it.
They're encouraged to do that.
Yeah, and if, and if you're, you know, can't find a particular comment, but you know, there's several places in the report. And I think what we should do is, is pay attention to that kind of thinking. And later in the agenda, we have a report on, I guess, on consolidation. And so I think what we could do, I think what we could or should do is, you know, pay attention to that kind of advertising for what, for, for other parts of the business. Even if, even if it means, you know, later I think she recommends to be part of her to frame the message for this study, maybe for the community. I think that's one of the working essential recommendations. But I think, I think that the staff and the board, we could use that. We, we could adopt that kind of thinking, you know, as we're trying to sell, sell a good person to, or whatever we're doing. We could frame it.
We can certainly use the research.
It's an opportunity to frame it.
You know, I'd like to see us continue this till Sally gets back. She's done such a fine job on some of the things, all fairness to her, she needs to make a presentation to us to complete her work.
Well, I, I, I agree, I wholeheartedly agree, but what I think I would like to see her do is, I don't want her to go back over the results.
No, no.
I'd like to have her come back and talk to them about the recommendations and kind of tie into some of the stuff like Bob, how we can use that.
I love what Gina and I are working on.
Yeah.
But continue it for the next uh study session or when she's available, yeah.
I was saying that part of the recommendation is to educate the public more and we'll be using the website, the newsletter, as well as including a testimonial from one of our participants. So that, you know, residents can, and it's really, this is kind of a struggle that I encountered during this program, but this is how I overcame these challenges.
Wouldn't, that would be better in the newsletter than, than the website, I think, 'cause I don't know how many people look at the website.
No, but we were planning on putting it in the next newsletter.
Well, I- But it's easy for you to know that.
Yeah, you could do it, but at the same, but if you want maximum participation, you'd view it in the newsletter.
I, I think what's the plan's up on operating, I keep thinking about maybe even a special newsletter. I know it's costly, but a special newsletter dedicated just to the success of the organics and what's going on. But I, I, I agree with your, I mean, you need to have Sally here to talk about her recommendations and, um, when you, when you guys work on your follow-up, are you gonna talk to Lisa M. for you at all?
We can.
Would you? Because she was kind of like the, the spear kicker, the one, the girl in the video, Janice.
Okay.
And just get her impressions of how things are going, because she has always been kind of out in the forefront of all this, so you could do that.
We had a question, did, did she take a look at the behavior of what people that did receive and didn't receive the kitchen towels? Is that part of this thing?
She did a survey, I believe thirty-eight percent used the kitchen towel. So there is a difference between those who used the kitchen towel and those who didn't wanna use the kitchen towel, whereas they use other means to store their food, um, like a, like a pepperware or something, yeah.
Yeah, we're providing the towels out in Temecula for their, their project, it's not popular out there at all.
Really?
Yeah, people aren't coming in there.
Yeah, we, I, we, we have one and it was very quick, my wife, because we have a horrific ant problem in our neighborhood. And we had ants in the house, they loved that tail, so my wife, my wife has bought stock in Glad bags, you know, the little zippy bag. And she puts all the waste in there and then obviously empties it into the bucket.
I use them all the time.
You use the tail all the time?
Yeah, we, we brought ours back because it was, because the news is, I have in the kitchen, but we, but we have the little, um, uh, well, not pepperware, but little plastic things, you know, four, five of them in the refrigerator.
Yeah, that's what my wife says, she's throwing stuff in the freezer, I don't watch that or watch that.
The freezer works because it will deter the odor.
We know that, true.
That's probably, that's why it's effective in eliminating the odor because you can't even tell.
Yeah, that little medley of things you had in the bag in the freezer was really good, I don't know what I-
Starting to wrinkle a lot more.
I don't see left.
Yeah.
And, and we only really put the stuff out where it's, it's not sloppy and it says, I eat everything.
You know what I do, I take the newspaper wrappers, the larger ones, and put it over there and then every day just take it out.
Well, it gets emptied every day.
And dump, and dump it and then put paper in the-
So we don't get a newspaper, so I can't do that.
I get all the other type of-
Well, we only do it when we do vegetable determinants and those kinds of things and those things, you know, ants are less interesting now. But, and, and they also don't, you know, let's put newspaper on the bottom of those ants and because my grass is picked and mowed on the day of the Christ Christmas, so I don't have any absorbent material in there.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I usually, some of us still do our own grass. And I usually do it on Wednesdays. But I've actually, no, I've actually been encouraged to move it up to like the day, like Friday or Saturday. Because my wife will say, is there anything in there? She won't put anything in there, any food in there until I put, you know, yard waste. All right, so then we'll have you guys coordinate with Sally and that's great, good job. Did, am I gonna do any kind of study? Were you unique in that?
Very unique in that, yeah, I, I really liked when you guys did, but they didn't.
I was gonna ask if you thought it was worthwhile, obviously, if you think it was.
I do.
Have you used the video?
They didn't do hardly any workshops, um, we find hardly any food out there. But they've already, they had a three container program already.
Oh.
So, but we'll find them probably in the food in the third.
Which can you replace?
They did replace the can, they just kept three cans and the third can's greenwich can and that is now the organic can. And that'll happen in July in San Clemente also, they have a three can program right there. And San Clemente is very similar to what we get here, remember we had some areas here that were dented?
Yes.
Because they didn't have a gas. They have, actually it's similar to the side city, about twenty-one thousand households, that same as here. And they have about four thousand households that are invested on the greenwich program because they're part of the Greenway Green. So with those households, we're doing the same as we did here, we're offering them a smaller car, like a thirty-five foot two-staff.
Oh.
Oh, really? So they're, they kind of copied that from what you guys do and that, right? Those are the accounts, I think, for the last, oh, those for the rates in there, let me tell you what rate it is.
Yeah. I called my brother who lives in there, but I'm sure you-
Their, their rate for the organics will be two fifty-four a month. So their, their overall rate is gonna be right over twenty-one dollars a month.
Wouldn't you say that Temecula, the reason why that they're not so excited about doing this, because they're not having any workshops? Where the workshops explain to people what's going on and, and get them to be part of it?
Well, Temecula's a little different, it's Riverside County first of all. Riverside County has banned organics at the landfill for a number of years, okay? And if you do take organics in the landfill, you get fifty some dollars a ton. So what we try to do is we try to try and get ship, ride and ship and take it to the vineyards. And the vineyards are rejecting a lot of it. So they were, they were in favor of the anaerobic digestive plant because they don't have a lot of options. So they were more interested in the plant and our investment than a program for the residents because they already have a green.
I was gonna say, these communities that you're running into, you said that already have a system of, you know, ours was a whole complete ideological change for people in case they're saying, they had to go from one to two.
Your, your program is being copied in Stanton because they had a single stream collection also and they deliver their organic stuff, they don't have a two-pass now, just like you started with. So Stanton is basically copying everything you did.
They really do.
And all the work that-
Even our staff are trying to-
In fact, they're, they're doing the same thing as what you guys did, they're not passing the rate on the customer. They're gonna, they're gonna postpone that because of you.
What size is Stanton?
Sixty-four. But it's a small town, you know, it's pretty far apart though. Well, you were definitely in the forefront of it, people are copying a lot of stuff you did and, in fact, most of it. Elizabeth was, I think she tapped on a lot of stuff.
Stanton and Irvine is now coming back.
Do you, Irvine also?
Yeah. So we should be trusting she has to see that.
Insulting, insulting fees if-
That is true, we should.
No, because Irvine doesn't deal with the ceiling.
They are with us, yeah.
They have, excuse me, Mr. President, they have, they have subsidized their residential fees lately. I, I live in Irvine in a condominium and I think I paid us the ten dollars.
I know, same thing in Midway City, they subsidize it, we got, Midway City still flex their own residential. And they're charging the residents, I think fourteen seventy-five, just like Irvine.
I, I think mine started at eleven and now it's nine.
State of the city in America. Okay, just no other questions, we'll move on to the ad hoc committee report.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President, and the board members. Um, the intended program was to enhance the appearance of the district's electrical control panels at wastewater pump stations utilizing art wraps. Um, the ad hoc committee met and we selected eight locations based on visibility and determined that the artwork should be historically sufficient and you will see an attachment aid. We have some kind of examples for each location. The artworks would be solicited by local artists in coachmaker schools, high schools and colleges and be selected by the committee members. Of the eight pump stations, only four would have panels applied for on this fiscal year and then the next four would be applied on for the next fiscal year. The total cost for all eight panels would be approximately six thousand five hundred or three thousand two hundred fifty for each year. And that's not including an award for one hundred dollars for each panel for the artist. Um, because this was not budgeted for in the previous years, funds will need to be transferred from the wastewater contingency in order to support this project.
You sound, that's not-
To my feeling. Um, why do you have to add one more mark to this, is it bigger than it would be?
It's bigger, yes. It continues upon the size, but I don't know.
Well, I, excuse me, if you take into account the new panel work on, if it can be the same size?
That's what the feedback included in the estimate.
I don't think we're gonna leave it on the outside because I'm trying to control it and then we're gonna affect the other things and where we want it. Have we done either one of those?
We, we haven't spoken to the president.
Well, actually, we had a complaint about the aesthetics of the panel.
Existence of it.
Yeah, because it's so old that, well, first of all, the board decided to not abandon it anymore because it costs a million dollars to abandon. So in keeping with that, we upgraded the core of the station, the pumps, the bases, piping, valves and all that. The electrical control panels, the outside enclosure is rather old and we've had requests for upgrades to it by the residents who res, lives above, Alan Burns knows that person. So this was planned for as part of that.
One of the things that Scott did, and I'm involved, and met with Tish at the-
Test.
Test, yes, at the Costa Mesa Historical Society to kind of get some historical significance with each station and what had happened and, um, she had some, I don't know how to phrase it. She had some interesting suggestions, interesting suggestions, um, that we, we wanna keep it as close to historical significance for that part of the city as we can.
Mr. President, I would make a suggestion that if you do go with these historical wraps which look great and that you recognize them, the Adobe and all that, that maybe you add a quick, a small description so that you would know that, like for instance, the one of the race car was not just some race car from Detroit, Michigan, but that, you know, where these are or just some, some short-
Just a, you know, a long-
Two-letter thing, two-word thing that says historical Adobe seventeen whatever.
Good idea.
At least for, when we left the meeting, we had put down, we wanted a Marina Harvesting for the Happy Night Pump Station.
Yes.
But you're listing, are these three above the, is that what you came up with?
These were for the Marina theme, I just figured we could just go with any standard Marina theme.
These aren't the traces, are they?
No, no.
These are just-
That's what, those are just by, that's why there's no image.
No, okay, okay. No, I, okay, yes, that was confused.
But, but for the, um, because that was such a broad topic and I figured the artist could select whatever thing they liked to put in there. But for specifically like the Adobe in the downtown, they don't know what that used to look like, so we have a point of reference for those, especially with the Alex Brothers and the Great Race. Um, it's so hard to find that online, so I think it'd be-
So these won't be the ones that we'll choose? No, these are just, could give them, I, I, the impression I got, you give the artist and that idea, both of them, yeah.
The, the artist, you still have to select the artwork by the artist.
And number five is what they're missing, we had talked about having, is this by the golf course, the one in the city courtyard?
Yeah.
We were thinking of a golf thing, this is gonna, right about fifty yards from there, they already have one with an eagle on it for Stasi, for Stasi. And, and ours, we thought a golf thing, so we'll tell them what I think we're doing. That's how I zoom that in already.
Yeah, so could you walk us through what's really going on, in other words, we got it now, but then you're gonna-
We're, we're gonna solicit to the local high schools, art community, this semi-contest. So here's, here's what we're looking at, um, we might give them examples of where we've already done it and then give them the historical theme that we're looking for.
Real criteria.
Yeah, and then they're gonna come up with designs that'll come back-
You could, here's our notes from them.
Oh, yeah.
From, we made notes for each one of the pump stations.
Yeah, like, um, for Giesler, um, something about the Adobe, the old Adobe. Iowa Pump Station, um, because of the way the railroad used to come through there, we're thinking of something like that. Adams would be tied to the Adobe down there, down on, um, Marina theme at Alamoor, a golf theme, it's at Corporate Yard. Santa Ana, because of the historical significance of the old apple orchards down there, we thought of something like that. And then Irvine, that, that Ellis for the Great Race that was done back in nineteen oh, whatever, you probably remember it. I wasn't I was like, they drove right through Timbuktu, I think. You don't remember.
It works for my hometown.
And then, uh-
Do you wait to go to, why don't, why don't we go visit the district deciding my hometown?
Cornstalks on a pump station here probably won't work.
I'm thinking more of a thing, uh, Haci tea.
Yeah, that's very much. And then, the twenty-first pump station, uh, we kind of thought of a downtown, the old downtown.
Yeah.
Isn't, isn't the courtyard, is that, is that only visible, isn't that interior?
No, no, it's right on, it's right on the street, but it's kind of, yeah. Which I thought the same thing, but I, I go by it now and I see it all the time. You see it more when you're coming this way than when you're going away from it, because it's right behind-
Well, I know the stations, the stations in the interior of the courtyard.
Well, the panel, those, uh, but I think we wanted to come to this meeting to, one, see if we can put on the agenda for funding. Like we, if you guys like that, we would, we would split the cost between two years and then what those cost for a hundred dollars for the winner. So that's what we wanted to get your opinions first, if you like our opinions, and then for the funding.
How many stations have them now?
Only three.
Make three.
Three? And, and you, and you narrowed the list from twenty down right to one?
There's, there's a lot of them that, like the one next to my house makes no sense to paint or to wrap.
Okay, okay, so the rest of them make no sense?
They make no sense. Yeah, just, uh, what was the one that, I'm looking at you because I'm trying to think, there was one, is it the one that's in Newport?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third, we, we didn't wanna upset the Newport residents, that, I mean, that kind of thought process.
The closure had commented on that one, yeah.
Here, here was our list.
We're trying to hide that building.
We had a list at the point, yeah. Oh, here's our list that we eliminated.
Yeah.
We got down to what we thought were the eight that would give us the biggest impact.
Yeah, well, I, I think Alamoor is, had no one else, it was like, any.
Well, I mean, that's a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, Admity cost everyone.
Right.
Okay, so we were-
But we're doing it for political reasons, so we're, because it lets, we get complaints out with Robert. Total of like sixty-five hundred dollars.
We get complaints for all this team's station.
But it would be in years, in years.
Because of it, with nothing on it.
Yeah, but with the things, because can get it.
So it's three thousand two hundred fifty for the first fiscal year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we, that was part of our plan, was to talk to the homeowners.
On the next fiscal year, each three thousand two hundred fifty.
So can we push this on the next agenda?
Well, that's what I was thinking, we were gonna ask you guys if we wanted to do that.
That was the reason for, for today, for sure, that would work exactly.
And the agenda items simply to get the funding out of the deserving.
It's unfortunate that, excuse me, it's, it's unfortunate that the artist would only get a hundred dollars out of such an expensive rack when the artist would be creating the whole thing.
But because it's a local artist, they get to showcase their work as well.
I, I agree that it's extremely important for them, vitally important, yeah.
Quite anonymous.
I, I hope, I hope the winners are students, I hope they're kids that need that right. Okay.
That's great, good job.
Okay, is that direction on that?
Our committee probably ending soon, once we wrap it all up.
Once, yeah, once it's fine, that's when we're gonna have a committee. Does that make you hungry or something? Okay, item five then.
The, the construction project is going very well, we're happy with it. On Friday the night, we filled the digests with water, we tested motors, uh, tested the leaks. Uh, tomorrow's the final concrete pour in the project, uh, we're tired about that also, we have not taken in, uh, organics into the project yet, still with water testing. As far as available space left in phase two-
As far as available space left in Phase Two, we've had a lot of interest by competitors, both L.A. Spanish and the Republic have made some offers to us for the space left in Phase Two. Uh, they sent letters out to our contract cities about two weeks ago telling them that Phase Two is filling up to see if they want to give you lip reservations. Haven't heard from them.
We have four phases, right?
Yes. Um, we have no grants with the next two phases. Um, Midway City, I was telling you earlier, they came out with their Board of Directors and staff two weeks ago. They were impressed with the project, uh, held a board meeting at the facility, and voted to proceed with, uh, with, uh, a green waste organic program. It's a curtsy that we do not have today.
What did you think?
This plan.
Pardon me, uh, Westholme. Then, of course, I thought the stamp was coming on board, uh, in July, and Laura was thankful, many. The lunatic Yald has shown interest, uh, moving forward with them on a contract amendment. And LA proposed last week that whatever additional energy available in Phase Two, last week, don't take it. So, we're, we're excited about all, all four phases being sold out here in the very near future. But what's interesting, a couple of weeks ago, the gas membrane was installed with a big round unit and tests with the air and so forth, and that was quite interesting. Um, the control building is finished, as well as all the lab equipment has been installed, so, uh, we're ready to go very shortly.
Did your issues with Edison, is that all?
Yes, Edison's all, it, the amount of power that comes into that place is just phenomenal.
Could you go over again the, uh, after market for compost?
Well, that's the big question that everybody has, the digesting and can't be directly usable in the field for now, or when they have to be put into a compost facility. According to our research so far, and we don't have the product yet, obviously, um, it's gonna be usable and saleable as it. There are, there are companies out there that doubt it, but we don't know until, you know, we have a product that's a solid digestive. Um, most of the carbon's been taken out of it, obviously, when, when it goes through the anaerobic digestion process, carbon forms into the gas and so forth. So, it's gonna be interesting to see the value of that. Um, our researchers from UC Riverside claim that, um, it's going to be very valuable for such, uh, agricultural types like alfalfa. It doesn't require a lot of product carbon. Alfalfa's a big market out in Arizona, Imperial County area, you know? So, uh, but the liquid digestive is, is, it's, it's solid as anything, but it's, and all, all the wineries like that.
Okay, the wineries?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll put that into their fertilizer, fertilizer that they, that they're very good.
So, so you have the gas taken care of, and you have the liquid taken care of. So, the only things you're able to find?
Which is a pretty good part of the, the outcome, but we're, we're hoping for the best from that. Now, we are permitting our Lakeview project, we have three hundred acres out in Lakeview by San Antonio Center. And that's sort of been a compost facility. We're permitting that for food and for digestive right now, taking it.
Out of, out of a thousand tons coming in, how many tons of, uh, compost come out?
I don't have those numbers.
Okay.
We have those, our ability.
Okay.
Are you watering the solids? Are you been watering the solids?
Yes.
That's a lot of, less of your product.
Absolutely. We also permitted our, um, our landfill down in Yuma, which is a rather large facility we have down there. We permitted a compost facility down there, so, uh, Imperial County Cities, we have five cities down there. We're offering them the compost project now, the AD, the transportation back to there. So, those cities are all pretty excited, so we're gonna have both compost and anaerobic digestion, uh, available. The plant aims by me, depending on the location.
Those Imperial County Cities and Goldbury, Yuma?
It's fifty miles away, and we take their, all the trash from there over here now.
Very good. Is that, you have to have, obviously, state rate, I mean, that's some issues, isn't it?
Portion prep, like, yeah, we think. We, we have people in the transportation department that work on that, so, you know, it's, but it's worth it. Arizona's a good, good place to do that.
If Arizona, the same regulation just comes on, it's probably seventy-five percent.
No, they have no regulations there.
Their gas is a dollar down cheaper than that.
You know, it, it is. I mean, everybody fuels up over in Yuma going back and forth. They don't fuel in Carolina.
When we, when I take the motor home, I know exactly where to stop in Arizona and where to stop before, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. It's a dollar, dollar, quarter.
One more question, is the compost that's gonna come out of the plant, is that materially the same as other compost?
No, it's, it's got much less carbon value to it, much carbon than removed from it. It is a solid material. It'll look like compost, but it won't have the, the carbon value that a compost is easily like. Now, the compost, uh, airborne, the Q and B and so forth, but really looking at compost facilities very, seriously right now, as far as enclosing them, at least in the district. Well, we've been taking the product of victory unless outside the district, so I don't think they're gonna have a problem, but we, we won't have an issue on, uh, how they want to do.
So, so, last one. Last one. So, it's all, it's not as valuable as normal compost, but you're trying to find maybe, like, alfalfa or some express thing that you could sell it for cheaper than regular compost, but it would be good because, for that?
Well, we, we don't know if it's gonna be less valuable or not yet. We're going to assume that it is, a lot of the carbon value, but we won't know when it helps finally test it, and that could be several months down the road. We're hoping that it has a very good value on it.
I'm sure.
So do we.
I know.
If you've had any commercial, oh, sorry. Have you had, like, anybody come in, like Scots or law, any of these companies to buy that stuff from you, do you?
We, all the compost, we have, we have three composting sites there and I have, we have South County outside of our facility at San Juan. We have Lakeview, and we have State Brown. And all of our composts that we produce are already pre-purchased by Scott. I mean, they, they purchase anything we produce.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't mean to use them specifically, but they are the biggest.
Scots and Celons, they're back and forth, and they compete with each other, but we, we produce a very good product. They all want it, and, uh, they, they all need more. I mean, there's just not enough compost to produce in Southern California.
We don't. So, when I buy Scots at Home Depot, I can almost think that it came from you guys.
You can think whatever you want.
I've gotta think that way.
Is it the carbon content a good thing or a bad thing?
Not having the carb, carbon content is a bad thing for most compost. You want carbon in there because that's what the plants live off of now. And I've gone through this with, I listened to this two weeks ago from a consultant. Plants have a root pattern, and roots look for water, or they look for carbon. And if there's not carbon in the roots, the, I mean, right below the plant, uh, people like, like, they'll plant, they're going like this, and it's carbon. But some plants still require the carbon. Alfalfa is an example. So, alfalfa is, as you can read in the internet, a huge product right now. A lot will be shipped overseas, and they're, Saudi Arabia's buying farmland all that they left. It's a crazy thing going on right now with alfalfa. And the alfalfa down in, um, Yuma and Imperial County, they're discontinuing the drought though, because it takes too much water. It's a huge water plant. And, but there's a lot of water in the west, and that's why the, the, uh, concrete, Saudi Arabia, so far, they're buying up farmland, and they're kicking all alfalfa over the China, I think China's, for, for that.
Most of these alfalfa probably would feed horses.
There you go.
Really, you don't know? Well, Harper Bob, what do they use alfalfa for?
They grow alfalfa partly to put nitrogen in, in, in the soil, because it's, it stimulates nitrogen.
Crop rotation?
Most, most crops in the Midwest aren't, aren't supplemented with organic material. They're, you know, they're just, uh, carton phosphorus and nitrogen, and most things that, I, I have some of the programs.
Oh, yeah. We'll see, very shortly.
Do you have a target date for it? Do you guys have anything with your target date for opening the plant?
It, it'll be anytime. I mean, they're doing testing now. I'm, I'm hoping, you know, in the next few weeks, it'll be, it'll take, uh, by the time they fill it, what is it, twenty-one day cycle, I think, okay? Well, we're probably looking at June, you know, having something coming out the back end.
Are you keeping it, have it been digged through, through the flood?
No, nothing to do with the flood.
There's dark evening, it's something, it's a reminder.
Yeah, Mike can tell you all that. That was, that was a big question a couple of weeks ago, but I couldn't take it out.
You can call Scott, he's with Mike right now, he's saying that this...
I just texted him to see how it went, but they haven't responded, so maybe it's just a little...
Are they doing the same presentation?
I could, I don't know. Uh, Scott wanted me to go up too, but I have, I don't know, I'm a clock, so I got around, but, uh... I bet you it's fun, I bet you it's a good time.
No, they're in slow.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
Well, I, my niece lives there, and it's slow.
Well, Mike, Mike flew up, yeah, I guess, he mentioned, he remembers a while, I guess, I don't know, I actually saw it, so, oh, there's a, there's a, there's a strip.
If he was sick when he got on the plane, he's sicker when he got off. Thanks, Dean.
Good luck on the, I'm sure you'll find something for, for, for everything.
That's good. Um, quarterly legislative analysis.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. For this first quarter legislative report of two thousand sixteen, staff has selected and tracked twenty-three bills that are potentially relevant to the district. Um, as you can see in the legislative report, staff recommends that the Board of Directors support AB twenty-two, SB twelve ninety-two, and HR thirty-three, this is three. Staff, uh, recommends opposing SB eight-eight-five, SB thirteen eighteen, and SB eleven seventy. Additionally, based on their potential relevance, staff also recommends watching the seventeen other bills that are listed below. And I'd like to provide a brief summary of each of the recommended support and oppose bills. So, starting with AB twenty-two, um, it was written by Assemblymember Gordon, and it would allow producers of advanced purified demonstration water to, to be bottled, um, and distributed for educational purposes and to promote water recycling. This bill is co-sponsored by OCSB and OCWD, and the district has been listed by OCSB to support this bill in order to further educate the community about the technology being used to purify used water and to distill drinking water quality. The water will not be sold to the, to the public, but it will be given to members of the public during security tours and similar educational events. Next, you have SB twelve ninety-two. Uh, it was written by Senator Stone, and it would require grand juries to hold exhibit interviews with the entities that are investigating in order to review the activities they're finding and allow feedback and commentary before the grand jury reports are made public. This bill is sponsored by CSBA. And lastly, we have HR thirty-three, this is three, um, written by Congressman Hunter. This is a congressional bill that would help protect wastewater agencies from civil disputes for sanitary sewer overflow or SFOs by limiting attorneys' fees and penalties against wastewater agencies. The bill would do so by amending the Federal Water Pollution Control Act to ensure that attorneys' fees are appropriate for local markets, uh, as well proportionate with the number of claims proven by plaintiffs. Currently, local agencies that defend claims are responsible for the cost of their own attorneys' fees, as well as those incurred by the defendant's plaintiffs, um, without respect to the number of claims that have actually proven.
Do you, do you know if these are, I tried to determine, are these federal cases or can they be state and local cases? So, it would trickle all the way down to state and local cases?
Yeah.
The, 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 the California River Watch, that they, they went in and looked at where all the money goes that they get from the Federal Clean Water Act, and it must have gone from his pocket to there. And they brought that out and made it clear that he just goes around California suing where, where, uh, the Water Board doesn't sue. So, he makes a living on those attorneys' fees, and it just looks like the whole thing just stands.
Yeah, so it was actually brought up to us by Eastern municipal water districts who went to a similar level.
Actually, they were the ones who, uh, yeah, they were the ones that beat that game.
Um, so, as Rob said, these types of cases are attractive to politicians because, uh, every, as it says, technically a violation of the Federal Water Protection Act.
Clean water.
Yeah, the clean water. Um, so that makes every wastewater agency vulnerable to such a loss, so. Like I said, we were approached by Eastern municipal water district as well as Casa, the California jurisdictions where the administration agency is responsible.
We, you know, we wouldn't sue us, because we, we were fine, that's true.
Would you get a fact?
Well, only if we can get them eliminated, then he, then he could someday, and go after you. Now, you could go over and drink that, you could, you could, I don't know. I could tell you, it's a squeezy time when I drink that.
Uh-oh.
Then I kind of leave a lot of things on.
Okay, so, moving on to the oppose bills, um, SB eight-eight-five, written by Senator Wolf. Uh, this bill would shift the responsibility of defending claims related to construction contracts, um, from contractors to government agencies. This means that rate cares would potentially be responsible for fronting the cost to defend contractors, uh, for claims that allege negligence, recklessness, or local misconduct. CSBA has listed the district's support in opposing the bill.
Can I say something on that? Um, being I sit on the legislation committee, that we have asked each agency to make a letter available and send it to law, you know, absolutely free to build a bill. And opposing it because it affects, yeah, once an agency, more, or, or the contract, or construction, or anything, and so, we have to respect for sure, so, you know...
We've already done, we've already done, yeah. After, I, I, and actually, this morning, I have filled it up, Mo-Dog, because Heather's put together a letter. Just like they said, if anything, if I'm gonna, I'll assign it, send it, so, we've already, we're both eight.
And so, SB thirteen eighteen is also written by Senator Wolf. Um, this would prohibit LACO from operating in the city or district from expanding drinking water, wastewater services, or infrastructure. And so, it has first extended those services to all the disadvantaged communities within or adjacent to its service area. Um, CSBA opposes this bill because of the limits that it would place on district expansion, as well as the burden that it would place on LACO, um, which may not have the resources to do things like, uh, pursue mandatory studies of territory outside the agency's, um, sphere, or conduct assessments of alternatives for communities that lack drinking water and wastewater. Uh, and lastly, we have SB eleven seventy, written by Senator Wachowski. Um, this would require local government agencies to manage and implement stormwater pollution prevention plans on every public works project that exceeds one acre in size. Many local government agencies oppose this bill because it shifts, uh, the liability from managing these plans from contractors who are actually performing the work, uh, and in the best position to manage the plans, which is changing the legal system, that's them, to local agencies. The shift could result in illegal pollutant discharges, fines, and water quality issues for local agencies. Um, CSBA has recently testified in opposition of eleven seventy, and they actively oppose this bill. So, that concludes, uh, the bills that staff recommends supporting and opposing. Please feel free to review the remaining watch bills, um, though they will be continued to be tracked for any amendments as far as relevant to the district. I think hopefully, I can...
I don't know if they've released yet, do you?
If so, if they were able to spill and cross them, stamp the bottom, because that's a hazard.
No, I, I, I want one of those problems.
You know people over there.
I will, I, I, I can deal.
Sure.
You know, I'll talk, just take it, okay?
Can you stand with the other bird?
And, you know, at the twenty-four, you have a reading, so. It was very receptive.
Did anyone else go to, to any parts of the district?
I tried, I got, I tried late.
Did you try it? Oh, oh, you mean you tried to move it, I, I, because I was going to, um, I spent an hour trying to find it. It's the university in Irvine, and on each side of University of Irvine is one source for. And then I tried to fall over, and finally I decided, you must have been in a private home.
Yeah, must have been a shop, it's something. Really?
No, it wasn't, believe me, I went all the way up, and way down, and over, and to the university, and to the line here. But, maybe call me mommy, because they are, it's just, I'm lost, I'm lost. And I couldn't find it, so I'll just have a pharmacist to know where we're going, you know, and, and we see. Yeah, I mean, could, if you've been finding it. I mean, I couldn't find it, oh, and I was just curious if anyone else found it, because it had to be private home, it's breakfast, too.
Free breakfast.
Oh, yeah. Well, I really wanted to talk to you about them during eight and five, to make sure that he's on board.
Senator Wolf is currently running for higher office, this is pretty active.
I mean, Senator John Borla was on the committee, which is interesting for someone.
Good job, thank you. Thanks for making it, understood. You are a person who likes to. Um, outgoing battery program?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The district's outgoing battery recycling program ended on April first, and you have in front of you the final report, which includes the total pounds of batteries collected, um, by each of the nine schools that participated. A total of four thousand five hundred and twenty-five pounds of batteries were collected and recycled. And Davis Magnet School collected the most batteries, a total of one thousand six hundred and fifty-four pounds. The district was a recipient of a plant that was power recycled called H P twenty-three, um, and this bill reimbursed the extraordinary costs of recycling wastewater. It's about three thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars per. Um, staff is currently in the process of scheduling H P twenty-three, so they got the first two schools with their words. So, you'll let them know, and we'll be able to do this.
I just, Davis, Davis, I mean, they're so, I know Lisa, but it's, it's astonishing when you look at, she went, well, either saying Dave or Jay. But when you look at somebody, that's amazing.
It's important to add that we did have, it depends if we're H P school or year, because remember that freak storm drain, you know, the heat, um, and along Golden Hill construction, and they were covered, and so, the storm that, that freak storm we had, I believe it was looking up.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of these schools had to be relocated, so they delayed their participation in the program. And Davis Magnet, I don't know, last year we had a picture of them, you know, trying to recycle their batteries from their batteries. Yeah. I had told Mike Terry not to do that for them anymore.
So, Mike, Mike witnessed.
He actually called and told me that. They were, they were, I have no idea, I just know Mike Terry called me and told me.
Instead of selling girls' stuff, because they were sitting out the same, really battered, just going.
But they are where they're not supposed, they were supposed to do it this year, but, you know, but it kind of is a lot lower, so I mean, that's.
Bridal interior.
There you go, Rob, that's great, well said, well said. Any idea why Wilson, Pomona, the other schools, are they just not interested in you?
We reached out to all the schools, and, you know, they initially explained, yes, I'd like to participate in this rate program, but there's a follow-through.
You gotta have someone on staff, you have somebody that wants to buy it.
Yeah, and, and I think that's what happens at the schools, we just don't have someone there to encourage the students to be in that. Versus Davis Magnet, which are very.
I know, really, but I, I think, I think every school misses an opportunity, they're not collecting recyclables from all the, they could sell that stuff, and they sell. But you gotta have someone there who's dedicated, you know, on a bunch of things, they, they do it, it's, it's.
I mean, the purpose, you, you made awards, um, Harper School, you know, if it's based on pounds, they don't have a chance. They don't have fifty-six kids, or special needs kids. So, it's the teachers and the parents who are, and they're, they're always. They might find one thing, and they, they always got, you know, when they did a street thing, that's just pounds for two.
But they still get, they still get paid off, because they love the kids, it's, it's less significant.
Yeah, but they can't get the big ones, you can't get the big ones.
No, but, the dissipators, yeah. Right, I, I know Waldo, um, uses their money to send, they have a camp that some of the sixth graders go to. So, I made the check presentation available last year, and they brought out the case about this trip from the money that they were having. So, the school has a specific project, they're seeking to use this to, well, based on the person, all the names, I mean, I'm not sure. So, they, they'll be noting, you've already notified, well, they'll be notified about their awards.
Yeah, about half the long of this fund, but, uh, potentially, uh, when we try to coordinate the check presentation.
Well, I'll be, I'll be helping. I, it's funny, a couple of years ago, when we made the phone book recycling, I gave a check at Wilson's school. That's where I lived at kindergarten in the second grade, and now, all these kids, they, most of them didn't understand English, so. I explained about it, it's my grandparents who made it, we've got a lot of friends. And that's, those check presentations, I gotta tell you, of the most fun days, they're really, I had a person on the list, old times, it's a lot of behavior. He does a little scan of the team, for me, so. It's, it's on the date.
Bring that in, you got it, Terry.
I need to pick out, to make sure.
I'd rather.
That'd be the data.
Good report, thank you. Uh, solid waste rates.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. For staff, uh, staff was requested in the last study for the driving surface our waste rate report part. Um, so I would be recommending that, and then the district's residents charged with driving surface waste fees based on property assets. B Ts are charged for residential refuse collection facilities for single-family and small multi-family units. Um, the current rate is two hundred and sixty per year, or fifteen dollars per month. And in the year two thousand twelve thirteen, the annual rate reduced from two hundred and thirty-nine, forty-two cents, to two hundred and twenty dollars. And then it was further reduced in the year thirteen fourteen, to the current rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per unit. The rate reductions were approved by the board and it's come to just decrease the reserve bonds in the public fund. For fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen, annual charge by the six four nine seven hundred and twenty-five thousand eighty-five, an annual charge of two hundred and sixteen dollars per year, for approximately twenty-one thousand eighty-three hundred. Um, in this report, you will find that the school's garbage waste charge on the last.
I think, I think it's probably time to eliminate the trade, small multi-family, um, um, say, we do single-family residence and small, we don't do small multi-family. We do any multi-family that request curbside service, and there are hundreds of developments now that desire our services, and, and we comply because they want closer to a single-family homeownership, they want more dumpsters and bins. So, we, we work through that plan, and, and, uh, it's not small multi, we want any multi that desire individual.
I'm going to agree with that one, because we actually have asked about, I need to try and not go back to that.
Two or more.
Especially with all the developments that we have seen, it's really hard to do.
Right, they call some, to call these places multi-family, I know from, in my industry, they're multi-family, because we tend to insure the whole thing, unless they're listed as P O's, P U Bs.
Right.
Um, we need, we need to work on that definition, right?
Because you're going to have a concession, because we say, are they using our services? Yeah, that's everyone, everyone. Is there a way to attract the people for all the aspects? Every, uh, hobby is not the only, and we have to go back to the five, but we were working on a trash collection site plan for all of those. I mean, we met with, not Dean, but Lawrence and his people, and now Wendy's doing it. So, if somebody comes in with a site plan, could have any number of them, and they try to make up a track, um, a method to get through all the streets and pick up all of the containers, whether they all need to go on one side, or they need to back and forth, whatever. But all, all of the bigger ones have provided our services, and I don't think we've turned any of them down.
My question, is it the truck, David's going first, or do we have to back down on the research? I think we're backing out on the concession.
Well, some of them, concerns, the city pulled the wild card on, no, we're grandfathered in, but no longer, uh, any multi-family homeless labs bring their containers out to the public street, please. If there's a old development on San Ana Avenue, and there's six residents back there, you might see all containers out of the street. But a new one enters, no, can't do it, so, between C R and R, and Wendy. They decide whether the truck's going to go in frontwards or backwards. It's going to go in one time, and, because the arms on one side, so they'll decide, is it easier to go in frontways and then all the containers go on that side, to come all up and then back out, or back in and have them all on that side? So, it's not easy.
Whether they come up in the car, or if they have to, or if they're not going to have to squeeze.
Uh, it's been for a couple of, couple of years now, but there's something we should, possibly. They claim.
I don't know, I haven't heard of that.
I do know that Wendy's trying to get corporate base from the truck clearing. Um, she was talking to her operations manager, David, we talked about it, but we always get the same response, we'll service them anyway. But, we, we like, when we package the filters, we like to have like a protocol, um, this is the amount, or this is the depth that the truck requires, if we're going to have.
Like a radius, like a radius, and it called the. Well, actually, no, we're, I, I'm part of.
That's your responsibility.
I want, I want you to tell us whether you, I, I think you did, like, a thirty-five foot radius would be enough to. Or, or a, like a hammerhead, a bit of fire.
But you, what I'm trying to say, like, what you mean, the doctors, if we can tell them, okay, this is the, this is the.
Polka dot, I mean, the polka dot, you, the trucks cannot make the turn back, and you're driving down, even that, or, I mean, if the masses are on its face, that is, we.
You go down the old polka dot, you know, you're like, you're, you're, a couple of days, but you can't make the turn.
Right.
Well, maybe it's a little extension.
Back to you.
They're backing in. Well, this one down the street there, I mean, that's the one, this one down here, I mean, you know, it goes in like this, and they, there's a gap in that, the truck's in.
That's back to the other back.
That's a money. Oh, yeah. Those trucks, those trucks have one driver, too, there's no way to have someone out there.
Well, they, as, as Liz mentioned, C R and R has committed to servicing everybody, which, believe me, is very important, because the city is, based on this backdrop, the city was ready to turn it loose to the open market, and Wendy helped squash that and said, no, uh-uh, it's either us or Dean. Nobody else with single families, uh, nobody else with individual containers. So, but C R and R had to come to the table and allow, and, and provide smaller trucks, because they can have small developments that do need city code, that the big trucks can't go in. So, it's, it's a tough decision.
Yeah, there's, there's, Rob, that's, that, if you made the commitment to service any projects, there's two issues with that, and we'd be bringing you in. And when all these smaller projects come on board, and they're having small trucks, they're definitely going to have to, C R and R, because they're formed to have to, especially if. Yeah, I remember, somebody tried to act on it, and it was called a, 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 we've decided not to, we're bored now, to ask for, to set things to wait till that. One, if only one, because it's hardly a population, very, very large. We don't, there's not enough patents on board right now, but when we all do, probably looking at a, a, a test, it's, um, not good, you know, so, I think, I should, should generally find everybody. And, but we wanted a whole lot on that, and we can be that way to connect to that desert. The other thing, too, is I think it's important that in November, there's supposedly an issue on that customer decision tax about growth. So, this trend with the monkey, or with the monkey units, all based on current council, that may change. So. Well, it's been covered in all of our cities, but this, I believe this is the only city that's, that's, that allows people to sell their, their public right to, 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 to. All of there, they, they have like a yellow flag, there's a flag, where all these, all, they all got a nice thing, you know, forty-five, they all bring off the main street, and that's, that's pretty cool. That's, that's the way it should be. And then, when it's back last day, it's working out. Right. But, and then, in fact, in some, some areas over in Pondera, you have to pick up, at the, at eight twelve, and in the afternoon, you have to, you know, there's ways to do it, because they, they said, yeah, you can do it.
But then, if you, you take the perfect, kind of back out, out of a downed, shorted, multi-sized driveway without another person, it's, it's just.
I have a forty-five vehicle, but if people, if I can get, I won't come down, so. Um, we're messing in the solid waste rates, did you have, um, Wendy or whoever take, you know, we, we had produced rates, kind of worked on those, or, and I could see numbers, I could see the number of where.
I did want to add one more thing to that, and we almost left that out of the bag, or the, or left the barn, because they were ready at the city to allow other solid waste haulers to pick up individual containers, until, uh, C R and R stepped up, and we stepped up, and both cities don't do it, we're violating that.
It's, it's.
We're still finding, um, properties that are being served by rainwater, and we have to send the E P S to flood them.
Well, we got the two, we, we got the two.
What, we still have some what?
There's another property after that.
Which one is it?
Uh, it's down behind the, of, I don't know.
On what side of E P S, yeah, I'm not talking about that.
You know, it might be, that might be a good argument, that before you bring back the expertise to do all these rage collections, that you inform the board of the fact that it will cost the residents of the city more unless they allow the containers to go out.
My guess is, if it's spread over the whole population base, it's probably going to be a very small thing, and I would do my guess. But again, when you get in, and you're trying to, but, you know, it's still, it's, like, what you can target customers for the center, they can, they can, they can, they can, and, so, um, I see either the food staff, or the, and the areas, or, or, you have to, often, the, often, they have the quality, and it's the food staff, and you're, that's, 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 and, and, back up to the, to the, most of our cities. This is another thing, we, we bring it all the time, that we expect a purpose, and we're going to have to charge them for the cost of that service, which we spread, that's a big question, you know, so you're going to come at it. If you spread it out, it's probably very much. Well, if it's spread out, you know, we're going to, that's, that's, why am I being? That's, that's the fact, yeah. I go down, I see. Oh, yeah, that's, that's a lot of fun. All right, Senator.
I think, thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
My, thank you. Good discussions today.
Okay. Well, that's, my, and this, this is an opportunity, you know, this is the kind of, this is where, where, um, cover cells, um, just, uh, I wouldn't, but, and I also think we have a, have a section where the residents, uh, could, uh, if they, you know, that, basically, that, that, so.